Okay, this December 7th, 2016 meeting of the Oyster River Crop and a School Board will come to order. Before we get started, I'd like to acknowledge the passing of David Micho, who was a principal at Mastway for, I believe, 14 years. Judy George, at his memorial service, gave a wonderful disremembrance of what a fine principal he was there. I actually knew him when he was at Stratum. And Stratum was just this fantastic elementary school where Wendy won major awards, things like the portfolio assessment, working with Jane Hansen and Don Graves, reading and writing workshop, you know, some of these really central ideas in literacy, you know, really worked out in Stratum when David was the principal there. And I remember they won, one award they won, and William Bennett, the Secretary of Education, came to visit the school. I mean, it was really an amazing place and amazing principal. So our thoughts go out to his family, and particularly to Scott, his husband, so, great God. So, having said that, could we have a motion to approve the agenda? Kenny?
I move that we approve the agenda as listed.
Moved by Kenny is her second.
Thank you.
Second by Denise. Discussion? All those in favor, raise your hands. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. Agenda is approved. A public comment? None? Okay. Approval, moving right along. Approval of the minutes for 11:02, the revised minutes. Are there any, I guess you had a number of corrections at last meeting. Are there any further corrections to those? Maria?
On page nine, where it says, "Maria Barth reported that the end of '68 hours of hunger is doing a fabulous job." I agree with that. There has been many successful food drives, but we are looking for donations of money, money, dollars, to make sure that we can give balanced nutrition in the bugs.
So you want to add, "We are looking for donations"?
In dollars.
In dollars.
Money, in cash.
Okay.
Got it. Money donations.
Yeah.
Exclamation point.
Okay. I think on page two in public comment, Julie Haines is referred to, and it's H-A-I-N-E-S?
It's H-A-I-N-E-S?
Yeah.
So the spelling's wrong?
Yeah.
Okay. If I just can point out today, Laura showed up for the meeting to take notes, but she really wasn't feeling well, and I sent her home. So if the board would grace me with slow talking, it'll be helpful.
Okay. Are there other corrections? Kenny?
On page six, and it was a correction that I had asked for regarding the discussion about the late start time. And I greatly appreciate the effort to capture what I said. And I also wanted to apologize to the board because I went back and looked at the tape, and I'm sorry I talked for so long, and please cut me off when I'm so worried. But I wrote something which I think more captures what I said, and I'd like to submit that. And I could read that if you want, or I can just submit it.
Why don't, I think you should read it for getting approval, you know, you just need to...
So I wrote, Kenny Rotner acknowledged the community input that was received, both from those in favor of changing the start time, as well as from those who were opposed to doing so. He also recognized his fellow school board members and the open constructive discussion that was had. He was confident that the proposed change in start time for the Oyster River Middle School and High School would pass based on the comments made by other board members. He felt that this was a good thing, and being sure of a majority vote in favor, stated that he would vote against the proposal. By doing so, he hoped to encourage and impel the school board to not stop at this step, but instead to be sure to consider in the future other concerns and opportunities. These could include studying the amount and quality of homework our students receive, exploring options for a flexible type of school day, as well as other areas.
Okay. Okay. Are there other changes? Troy?
Oops, sorry. Just wonder if you're going to watch this tape as well, to see how long you've got.
So while we're on page six, if Kenny wanted to adjust his, can we just make sure that the little blurb at the end that says, "Student Representative Troy concurs with Kenny's thoughts on the homework issue, as well as the structure of the day, in hopes that a creative outcome can be reached," can we make sure we keep that in there and maybe just say that I agree with what Kenny had stated?
Sure. We wouldn't, we wouldn't adjust that anyway because it's already in the minutes, and nobody asked us to correct it, but it'll stay.
So you don't need any...
Well, it was in blue, so I was just making sure.
So what's in blue will be in the minutes?
Those are the changes. What Wendy did was she went straight to the tape, and she watched it and then tried to capture it.
Okay.
So we're hoping it's far more accurate, and we can put in Kenny's corrections, as long as the board supports it.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Those corrections, further corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor of the 11:02, 16 minutes as revised, please raise your hands. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor.
And who's the motion? Who's the motion on that?
Kenny, and then I second. Yeah, Kenny made it, and I second.
Thank you.
Okay. Could I have a motion to approve the November 16 regular meeting minutes?
Oh, that was the agenda. Oh, you're right.
Thank you, guys.
Okay.
So we need to, I'll motion to approve the November 2 meeting minutes.
As revised.
As revised.
All right. Moved by Denise, second by Al. Let's vote again. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. My apologies. Could I have a motion to approve the regular...
I think I forgot to read this.
11:16 minute regular, regular meeting minutes? Denise?
I motion to approve the November 16 regular meeting minutes.
Moved by Denise is her second. Second by Al. Are there corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your hands.
Did I take those now?
I'm sorry. Can I just see the hands again? All those in favor? Kenny, you don't... Oh yeah, are you not, are you voting? Okay. Six in favor, the student rep in favor. I abstained because I wasn't here.
Oh, thanks.
Okay. Okay. Announcements, commendations, and comments from the district?
Good evening, everyone. Carrie Vash from Mastway. We had a few exciting events so far this week and a few coming up that I'd like to recognize. First of all, as I've spoken numerous times, the town of Lee has been celebrating their 250th anniversary. And we were fortunate this Monday that the town sponsored the Dearborn Group to come speak with our fourth graders. What the Dearborn Group is, is a group of historians that like to read and act and teach through drama and bring in some artifacts and whatnot. So we had the kids grouped up in small groups, and it was a great way to start back to a Monday in getting into revolutionary times and learning a bit about the history around them. The town of Lee actually sponsored that for us. They paid for it. So I'd like to say thank you to everyone there and everyone on the 250th Committee. As a culminating event this past Sunday, they pulled together some artifacts for a, what am I thinking of? Time capsule. Thank you. Little blank there. Time capsule. And each of our kids wrote a little blurb on an index card, either about themselves, about what they dreamed to be in the future, about what their wonder the future will be. They were absolutely adorable. So I really hope some of us are here when it does get opened. They were great. Last night, we had our annual holiday concert. Pam Felber, under her direction, was fantastic as always. Our third and fourth graders nestled into our school at Mastway. I have to say, it was a very reassuring moment having everyone together. And they did a great job. The Mastway community and school dedicated it to David Micho, as Tom mentioned earlier, who was a principal at Mastway from 95 to 2009. We were really pleased. David's partner and his sister joined us at the concert last night and said they were so happy to be in a place where David was at his best and happy. So that all warmed our hearts. Tomorrow night, we have a PTO meeting, so I would like to invite anyone to attend, 6:30 to 7:30. We'll do our best to be prompt, but don't forget, wear your ugly sweater. We'll be having a competition. We're pleased Doris Demers will be meeting us there and sharing a little bit about our food service department, nutrition department, and giving us some samples, which is lovely. A few upcoming events during the month of December. Monday, the 12th, our first graders will be presenting Holiday Heroes, 6 o'clock, again back in the Mastway Gymnasium. And then the following week, the 21st and the 22nd, come back, one of our all-time favorites, our expression sessions. If you've never seen them, please do try to attend one. I can certainly send out more prompt times and whatnot if you'd like. Basically, what it is, is a talent show. Children are allowed two minutes to showcase their talents. It ranges from magic tricks, to dancing, to singing, to piano, you name it, hula-hooping, you'll see it all. Some classes do whole class events. It's a blast. So please consider coming by and seeing the talents that you don't naturally see in the classroom every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Greg. Please?
Good evening. I just wanted to let you know of a few upcoming events in the high school. Tomorrow evening at 5:30, there'll be a partnership coffee here in the library, and the theme of the evening will be student life. How does homework fit in? So I hope to have a lot of parents and students and community members attend. Friday, we have our midterm, mid-quarter grades going out. And next week, on December 13th, there is a college application help session occurring right at the end of the school day, and counselors will be available to help students.
Others? Okay. Board announcements, commendations, and comments? Denise?
So the Oyster River Sustainability Club, I'm reading this right from the newspaper, but I want to make sure that people, if they haven't heard about it, know about it, is basically having a fundraiser dinner for the Powder Major Farm in Forest Project. So the dinner is this Friday, December 9th, from 6:30 to 8:30 in the, here in the high school, in the cafeteria. And the cost is donation, it's actually donations will be $25 per family, oh, $30 at the door, $10 per individual, $5 per student. So they are trying to raise money to, you know, keep the Powder Major Farm in Forest as is, and they, this is part of that fundraising.
Other? Announcements, commendations? Kenny?
I just want to point out, and maybe we'll hear more later, but there were two events in the last week or so. There was a bomb scare threat at the high school. There was question of a child in an incident. And just the response from the central office and the notifications that went out, email, phone calls, updates, keeping the community abreast. I just think that's the way systems should work, and they did a great job in bringing that news forward to everybody. So thank you.
Thank you, Kenny.
Sarah?
I had a few questions, actually, and Jim, I don't know if your staff can answer them now or at a later date. One, a community member brought up the scoliosis screening. I wondered if the administrative team had had a discussion about to re, you know, to start scoliosis training again in the schools and what that outcome was. My other one is, oh, I was, I was starting to think, as I've been reflecting on the math programs. Todd, is there a time that we are going to hear what the process is for selecting the sci, any science, either program or materials? I know you guys are doing work on next-gen science, and I know that's not a board goal, but we were going to be kept sort of abreast of what's going on. Is there a time we're going to hear about that?
The goal this year, though, is not about selecting resources. The goal this year is to familiarize ourselves with next-gen and to begin the process of sort of unpacking it. Really, next year would be when we would be focusing on resource acquisition. So the answer to your question is absolutely, when we reach that point, there will be a presentation from the committee.
But like, for the math program, there was a very specific process put in place to select the program, and we heard about that process ahead of time. So I'm wondering if there's going to be some similar kind of process put in place.
Exactly.
Yeah, we intend, we've been using IMET for all of our various selection processes.
Great. Thank you.
And related to the scoliosis training, we haven't met with the nurses yet, so that'll be on their agenda, Sarah.
And Carrie, I'm talking too much again, but we do have a physician who we employ, who is the consult for our school. I would suggest on the scoliosis issue that we reach out to her and that she be the one who does the research and formulates a policy for our schools. That's where the knowledge really would lay.
Thank you, Kenny.
And my last one is that I know, Troy, you mentioned that you were looking, the high school, was it the Senate is looking at the technology policy?
Yes.
Okay. And I would love, at some point, I know you're going to possibly report out to either the policy committee or possibly the whole board, and I guess I would love to put out a request that that be done at a, at a full, full board level, at least, even if you guys, if the students present a policy, then the policy present to the whole board. I think we've had a number of community letters about that, and I think in the interest of good communication and transparency, that's going to be an important one to bring out in front of the whole community.
Okay.
Not necessarily as a forum, but as a conversation that we have publicly.
Yeah, I can speak, I'm going to speak more to that in my student senate report, but I think our goal is to maybe talk with the policy committee, and then once we've sort of looked through, see what they say, then bring it to the whole board level. So yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
Other? Announcements, commendations? Okay. Assistant Superintendent's report? No? Superintendent's report?
Thank you, Tom. I have several issues that I want to share with the board this evening. I want to point out that New Hampshire Public Radio reached out to me and did an interview related to our late start decision. And in a unique aspect to it, had asked whether I would reach out to parents and students to see if they would like to contribute. I reached out to Troy and his mom, and they both agreed that that would be an option for him, and they're going to do it tomorrow at the end of the school day. And the Weigart's children, Emma and Genevieve, have also been invited. And so they're planning on putting it on, I think, the radio next week. So I want to acknowledge Troy and the Weigart girls for participating, and their parents for, you know, allowing that to happen. So it's a really incredible approach, I think, by public radio to hear the student voice around this issue. In your packet, I gave you a letter from our architect and landscape architect related to the Jaeger property. We've, I've walked the property twice. It's, you know, a very, very beautiful piece of land. The unfortunate part of it is that it's a very hill and valley oriented piece of property, steep hills, steep, steep valleys, relative to our being able to use that property. Last year, we looked at it as a possible, from a possible field use perspective, and this year, we looked at it as a possible location for a school. The conclusion from both reports is the same. The cost of developing that property would be enormous. I know that Mr. Jaeger had, you know, big dreams and talked about, you know, access off of Route 4 and all kinds of issues, but there's just not enough flat land there for it to make sense to build a school. I have communicated that to Mr. Jaeger. The board authorized Maria to put forward two school board resolutions. One is on criminal record checks. The New Hampshire School Boards Association has decided to promote that issue at the legislative level because they agree that with the limitations, the way the law is now, as superintendent, I'm not getting enough information to make an informed judgment. They chose not to pick up the resolution that you had authorized her to present related to having no guns on school property, even during elections. They felt it was a constitutional issue that they were not willing to promote. So that is the result of that work that the board did around those resolutions. So, you know, we're batting 500, and there's only a couple of school systems in the state that actually submitted unique resolutions, so I think it's a credit to the board. In your, well, I'm going to go to the, I'm going to go to the two issues that have occupied my life and Suzanne's life and every administrator working with high school students for the last week. So I'll start with the bomb, no, I'm not going to start with the bomb there. I'm going to start with the last Friday, which was the issue around a student being approached, asked if they want a ride. Student, high school student, was anxious enough that they went right back home. Student was walking to school from Madbury at 6:15 a.m. So, you know, dark, visibility poor, probably that helped raise the student's anxiety. The student went home, reported it to the mother. I got a call from Suzanne at 6:30 a.m. I said, "Well, the student's going to be in school at 7:30, so I'll catch up with you," because I knew she had an immediate business at 7:30 around 8:30, and then we go forward on, you know, what really happened, investigate it, and so forth. Well, I got there at 8:00. Suzanne was already in the process of setting up a conversation with the student. So the communication that I sent home on Friday reflected the conversation that happened at the high school. So after I sent out my communication, almost within, I would say literally, five minutes, the Madbury Police had put out a abduction alert notice. And in it, it described the student physically pushing the, the abductor away and escaping and going home. I talked to Chief McGann today, and we both agree that the latest information we have on that situation is that a adult in the neighborhood offered the child a ride. The adult had no ill intentions, just saw the kid out there at 6:15 in the morning. You know, based on visibility, I'm sure that, you know, the issue kind of rose into a scary fashion inside the student's head. But I have to say, the student was at school at 7:30 on Friday, cool, calm, and collected, super nice kid. He did exactly what he was supposed to do, which was, you know, he's anxious, he went home. Perfect. The, the issue, of course, as we all know, became a bigger issue than life. It's played out on Facebook, multiple attempted abductions, all kinds of rumors now around this. So since my meeting was literally this afternoon before this meeting, I will be putting out, with Chief McGann's support, another communication to our families tomorrow outlining that, what I just shared with you, that there was no abduction, there was no struggle. It was really just a misunderstanding of what was going on at 6:15 in the morning. And Chief McGann supports that position. So I'm going to quote him in the communication so that families know ultimately how this resolved. I was just told recently, like, in the last few minutes, that this conversation, you know, may still be percolating in the younger students' minds. So I'm going to ask the principals and the staff once again to talk to the students to let them know that there was no abduction, and there is no multiple abductions, because that's one of the rumors out there, and that there was no attempt. However, having said all of that, as disconcerting as all of it was, I have, I want to take a moment to commend the administrative team. Our administrators, elementary, middle school, and high school, did their job perfectly that day. Every school addressed the situation on Friday. I sent out an email to Carrie and Jay and Dennis. Each one of them took mine and then customized another approach to it to reach their staff and students. I couldn't be prouder of the administrative team and how they kept their head together. They were cool, calm, and collected. They followed our process. In terms of direct communication to me, you would have, based on the dialogue I was having with the community, I had one parent contact me, two parents contact me. One was, "Thank you so much for getting the information out early." And the second parent said, "In addition to sending it out through an email, I wish that you had used the phone system." I didn't on that particular one because I didn't see the immediacy, but as the parent said to me, "I didn't see this until 3:30." So it's always a balance about using the telephone system, because when I use the telephone system, what happens is every building lights up because they want more information, and all the information is in that communication. I also was deliberately trying to keep the messaging direct, honest, without inflaming anything, because we were still gathering information. So that was, that was the issue on Friday. Yesterday, we had a bomb threat at the high school, and I would say 99.9% of the time, bomb threats simply are threats. They never materialize. However, the bomb threat was specific enough to say the time, and part of the protocol is, the more specific a threat becomes, the more you have to engage it as if it were real. So we had time, because the threat was for the afternoon. Again, Suzanne's team, all of them, fantastic. The SRO, excellent. Heather's staff, right on it. We, once we made the decision to vacate the high school, Lisa had the buses there within 10 minutes. We said we would vacate the high school at 10:30. The high school was vacated at 10:30. It was an excellent response by the staff. Then we had a number of issues that these kinds of protocols don't necessarily consider. We had a special needs population that was very needy. Our special educator, who services those kids, Amy, walked the kids to the middle school herself and stayed with them before we got the buses going. So that was handled extremely well. Heather and Mike McCann and Cory and Mark marched the remaining Barrington kids, or kids who are normally picked up by their parents, down to the middle school, and they did the protocol there of dismissing kids to their parents. That was done by 11:08.
Wow.
So in terms of our operational procedure related to this particular incident, we emptied the building in 10 minutes, and we had every child home, or on their way home, by 11:08. So I just, again, want to take the time to say what a great job our administrative team did, but more, many of our high school staff stayed back and helped me and the other administrators walk through the building. We went through it floor by floor. We checked every room. We checked every bathroom. And the last person in the building was our SRO, Suzanne and Todd, as they waited for the state police to arrive. So we were able to confirm that every child was out of the building safely. It was, it was really extremely well done. And as you know, I've been communicating that issue with, with the families and with the board regularly. So the bomb threat, of course, ended up being just that, a threat. The state police brought the dogs in. They did a complete scour of the building. The dogs found nothing, which allowed me to say to the parents last night, "It's safe to return. We'll have school this morning, pending weather." And fortunately, the weather cooperated.
You made the right call.
So, you know, we practiced these protocols. Only last week, we vacated the high school to the middle school en masse. And I think it was the week before, we vacated the middle school to the high school en masse. So in terms of our reaction time, I really think it's a credit to both Jay and Suzanne and their leadership that they practiced those evacuations, and low and behold, we had to use it, and it was done beautifully. So every time we have an incident, I sit with the administrative team, and we go over the incident, saying, "Okay, how did we do, and what would we improve?" So the first thing that we would improve in, in how we deal with these issues is, you know, we've got the telephone call, and we've got the email down cold. That's working extremely well for us. A person I shall not name mentioned that it was... A person I shall not name mentioned that it was probably additional better practice for us to include text messaging. And the reason that came up was because we had kids at UNH, and we had kids at the Vogts School. And if we were text messaging, that's the natural communication style of kids. To Josh's credit, he's on it, we have already started downloading the information we need to text to our population. So just so you know, as a board, it works differently than email. So what we have to do through FCC regulations is we have to send out a test text that people have to give us permission to use. So they'll get it once, if they don't want to get it again, they just simply say no. They want to continuously get it, then they say yes. And we'll activate texting as a way of also adding to our ability to communicate effectively with the community. We also saw a hole in our communication with the fact that we didn't have the Chief of Police in Lee in our communication. Madbury was getting our communication chief, and the Durham chief was getting it. Carrie called me and said, you know, "We need, we're not getting it to the chief," so he's in it. And then, in addition to that, we are going to do a Maria technique. If anybody wants to be part of our communications, we're going to put a piece in, in the Friday update and in our communications to say, we'll create a citizen list so that people can get accurate information from us when we're dealing with these issues. You know, Maria shared with me just before the board, you know, there's concerns out there about, you know, how we did it, what we did it, what happened. And those concerns are actually coming from people who aren't getting the communication. So we'll try to build a communication vehicle for those who do not have students in the system. That'll take longer than the other two issues I talked about, but that's the kind of things we're learning. But in terms of the process, procedure, the execution went very, very well. And I couldn't be prouder of, of the staff. Any questions on either one of those two issues? Ken?
With the, and again, that's, you know, a compliment to everybody involved. With the first issue, with the school board resolutions, I would like it maybe on a future agenda that we do discuss the voting that takes place in our schools and whether we're still comfortable with that, given that this law will stay in effect.
Okay. Any other questions? So the last thing that I wanted to share with the board is, we have a request from a doctoral student to do a survey of our students related to staff-student climate relations. And the way that I interpret our policy is that surveys need to be presented to you. And so obviously, the reason I'm saying this is that that survey and the questions are in your packet tonight. My intention was to make it an active agenda item on the 20th. However, Tom and I were talking and wondering whether the board wanted to delegate that responsibility back to me to execute or not execute, based on my conversation with the person. So the policy says you have to see it. If you want to give it back to me to execute, I can do that for you. Denise?
I, I am looking at it, and it looks like an awfully long survey to me, so I mean, I have some concerns about the length of it, so maybe we need to have a, I don't know, have a discussion about it.
It is an opt-in survey. I told her that she would have to get active permission from parents.
Oh, okay.
That we wouldn't automatically give it.
Okay.
She wants to also survey the staff, which, you know, I'm, I'm okay with, but I told her, "Don't expect a lot of returns." It's, you know, this, this is an optional survey. The staff is, we've got many more things that are more important than supporting a survey, so I told her the turnout might be very small. So I've told her that. But I also told her I would get that to you in front, in front of you tonight. So I can put it as an active agenda item on the 20th, or if you want me to do it, I'd be glad to do it.
Would you rather be active?
Marie's got a point.
Maria?
I'd move to authorize the superintendent to go ahead, as he says fit with this.
I would second that. I think that there, it's more, they could sit down, talk with administrators, and I don't really think that should be our job to, that, these surveys. So, so, other comments on it?
Yeah, I'm fine with it, delegating it back to Jim. I think I looked it over quickly, and I'm sure Jim will look more closely at the questions and make sure that they're ones that are acceptable to ask our students and staff.
Please?
Yeah, my main, I, I'm more comfortable with it being an opt-in. My, my main concern was it just seemed to be something that would take a lot of class time, because it's such a long survey. So that's my concern about it. But where it's an opt-in and it, you know, the just, I'm sure you can figure out when the survey would be administered to those who are okay it or whatever, so I'm fine with that.
Yeah, typically, we've used advisory for surveys for other things, so it's, you're not directly missing class time. It would just be, that would, that would just be when we would do it, I don't know.
So we have a motion to delegate the, you know, determination about this to Jim. So further discussion on that? No? All of us in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. So that won't have to come onto the--
I will bring it back. Thank you.
December 21st agenda. Okay? Others?
That is it for this evening, Tom.
Business administrator?
Good evening. I'm bringing back another budget update for the year 1617. And I usually go back to the previous year and just compare where we are, and usually about the same time of the year. With the exception of the special education budget, we're on track. Again, call your attention to that line item. I think we're all aware of that. That's what's driving our budget for next year. A number of move-ins with significant needs, so that budget is showing a negative balance right now. There's a lot out there that's been encumbered, that's kind of what-if, so that number may change. And I remind you that we do have a trust fund if we need to access that, and I wouldn't suggest doing anything with that until we get well into April or May and see where we, where we stand.
And just to remind the board specifically why the special ed account is as struggling is because of the 11 move-ins we had between the time the board approved the budget and we started this school year, and it's really had a detrimental effect on the special ed line.
So basically, what you're saying is that, because I know there's always that built-in, you know, what we, what we're talking about, the fund balance and stuff, is that what you're saying, is that some of that may have to come from that?
No, I'm talking about the fund that was established that we had on a Warren article to put money in for emergencies if we should go over. So that fund exists, and if we need to access that, we have that ability to do that.
Okay.
But I wouldn't recommend doing anything until we get well into the school, you know, April or May, to look, revisit that and see if we really want to do that.
Okay.
Other questions? No? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Student Senate report?
Yeah, so the Student Senate has been working on creating a cell phone policy where there has not been one at the high school, and maybe looking at the middle school policy as well. We got a small group of three, possibly four, members, including myself, to go to the School Board Policy Committee and discuss kind of the draft we set up at our previous meeting. And then, once we create that, or once we have that meeting, we bring it to the board. The, of the three that are for sure going, we have one that was a freshman who had just been in the middle school climate at our middle school, so she could speak more to that than the other two seniors, me included, could do. So we thought that that was beneficial for you guys, and so we'll look to do that at the next policy meeting. As far as student life, Patrick O'Brien finished third at the Northeast Regionals, so with a top-10 finish, he qualified for the Nationals in San Diego on Saturday, December 9th. So that's very exciting for Patrick, and student body is behind him. And All-State audition results are back for music, and results are back, and Oyster will be sending seven of our students to the All-State Festival at the end of March, so that's very exciting. And one last thing, Jackie Lupinski and Annie Hanley-Miller have created a photo contest for advisories relating to change direction and the five signs, so--
Can you give the names again, Troy?
Jackie Lupinski and Annie Hanley-Miller. Sorry, I'm trying to, I'm talking pretty fast.
I'll get it off the video. Thanks.
I have, it's got a bunch of the names, too. This has the names of the seven students that are going to as well.
Thank you, Troy. Are you still talking from this?
Um, no, I'm pretty much all set, so--
Appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely. So we'll look forward to getting the cell phone policy to you guys. And, oh, one more thing, winter sports are starting, so everyone's optimistic about that. And, yeah, so--
Great. I think it's great to have you folks involved in this policy, because you've lived through it, you have a sense of what it's--
Yeah, that's kind of why we wanted to bring it to the board, just because we feel like we see it every day, so, I mean, we can provide input on it that would be helpful.
Great, thanks. Thank you. Perfect. Okay, Lisa?
I don't know how to make this. Oh, it is on the screen. Someone did it for me.
It's magic.
First of all, I'd like to thank the members of the committee, because I think we have the most incredible committee of people who know computers and statistics and economics and just real estate, and know the schools and, and the children in the district and, and what's going on in the town. So I just want to thank the, the other eight people on the committee. Also, two people who have left the committee in the last year, I want to thank very much Tom Merrick of Durham and Lorna Jacobson of Madbury, who served on the Long Range Planning Committee for over 10 years each. Now, as you probably know, the, sort of the mission of our committee is to provide enrollment projections 10 years into the future. We try and make every effort to do that as early as we can in the year, even though we don't report it. Usually until December, the numbers are available in November to assist in the budget process. And every year, we relook at the models and the inputs and see if we can refine and make our projections better. What we are seeing this year is really quite interesting, because as you know, for years and years, we're talking about the decline in enrollment. And every year, recently, the decline that we're projecting has been getting a little bit less. And if you look from the peak in 2000 until this year, over 16 years, we've lost 278 students in total. Over the next 10 years, we're losing only 109, or about 100. So that, that shows that the, the loss is definitely tapering. The methodology that we use for kindergarten, we have a linear regression model that projects kindergarten enrollments using certain independent variables, primarily births prior year, five years prior. And for first through 12th grade, we use grade progression ratios, which I'll explain. In the case of kindergarten, we update the regression equations and the coefficients every year. I mentioned the primary independent variable is births five years prior. There are some autocorrelation components. And we're, now that we have, well, we've always had a couple of economists on the committee, PhD economists who teach at UNH. And we now have Allison Mueller, local real estate agent on the Long Range Planning Committee. So they're bringing us different possible independent variables to look at in terms of predicting births and predicting kindergarten based on move-ins. And they are going to be exploring employment data and real estate data to see if we can find another independent variable that will help. This year, since we now have full-year kindergarten, we are using, instead of using a multiple linear regression to project first grade, we are now projecting first grade using grade progression ratios. And if you recall, in the past, we had a year where we had a phantom first, Carrie will remember, we had a phantom first grade class at Massway that never showed up. And that was because we were using this regression model to project first grade based on births six years ago. And meanwhile, you had the things going on, people moving in and people not moving in, and we were projecting more first graders than there, than there could be. So we were over, and, and I think a teacher was actually hired for that, so I feel kind of bad about missing that mark so much. But now that won't happen, because we know how many kindergartners there are, it's full day, so we can just use a grade progression ratio to get to first, and we won't have that issue anymore. So that's nice. The way we project grades one through 12 is grade progression ratios, which we use five-year averages. They, they take into account net in-migration, so it takes into account move-ins and move-outs. Specifically, we take the students in the prior year, we add the move-ins, we subtract the move-outs, and then we have a ratio of the, the subsequent year divided by the prior year. And that becomes the grade progression for that year, and we take a five-year average of that, and that's what we use. Now, the GPRs are all over 1, which means there are more families, there are more children moving into the district than moving out of the district, and that's pretty much at every grade level. And even though every year we get a new five-year average, it's always somewhere between 1 and 1.04 for every grade. The elementary school split. Now, people ask, "Well, why don't you just use births in the geographic region of homes that would send their kids to that school?" Unfortunately, we can't do that, because we don't have inform, and we can't get information on what address a birth originated from. We only know by town, well, we actually even can't get it by town, because the state will not release any data cell that has fewer than, I think, five in it, because they don't want to compromise anyone's privacy. So the only way I can even get births for the district by year, by month, because some months are going to be less than the minimum in a given town like Madbury or Lee, is to get the sum for the district, and that has to be given to me by the state for my purpose. And they can aggregate it, and even when the cell is small, they'll still give it to me by month, so. Since we only have births in total for the district, we have to take our projection for kindergarten and split that between the two schools. And the way we do that is to use, again, a historical average of how they're split between the two schools. But once they're in kindergarten, we use the GPR specific to that school to progress And the final thing I want to, before I get into the projections, the final thing I want to point out is how we develop this plus or minus range. We have-- We have 21 years of historical forecasts at our disposal, each one predicting 10 future years. And what we do is to take the prediction one year out for the last 21 years and compare the prediction for what the actual was that year that they were predicting. Then, we do that for all of the years that we can get, and we then take the difference, take the absolute value of the difference between the actual and projected, and divide that by the actual to get the percentage difference, which will be an over or under percentage. Okay, this page shows the projections. As you can see, our enrollment this year is 2,115, of which 115 are Barrington students. And the enrollment goes down very slightly, ending up at 2,006. So we're losing a little over 100 over 10 years, which is just about the flattest projection I've ever presented. So that's interesting in itself. Also, the plus and minus percentage has tightened up ever so slightly in the later years, so I'm not sure exactly why maybe our more recent projections were getting better. Now, in the elementary schools, we have something very interesting, because we see, yes, they're declining, and we get down to 602 in 2021, and each school has 301. So we have achieved parity in 2021, if you believe this. Then the grade progression ratios work their magic, and lo and behold, we're never in parity again. But as the population grows, because births are going to level off in the high 80s, so the elementary population reaches the low point in 2021 when we're at parity, and then goes up again. And so by the end of the period, we're not quite at parity, but it's a lot closer than it was historically. At the middle school, which is what everyone is interested in right now, we have 656 this year. It does go up as high as 664, but then it goes down to 569, which is a loss of only about 90 kids, which is a smaller loss than we had been projecting. High school tuition students. Now, as I mentioned, this year we have 115. We've been told that there might be 138 next year, and that this will level off at 160 in total. Now, just so that no class would be disadvantaged by saying, well, you know, we can take 45 now, and then next year, in order to be at 160, we'd have to take 35. I just said, well, we'll cap it at 40. That might or might not be what we choose to do, but it seemed like the most logical thing to assume. And as you can see, there's not much movement in this number after a couple of years. The high school enrollment from the district, 651 now, it goes up to 677, and then drops down to as low as 617 in 2026. And the total, as you can see, 766. It goes up really to 830, 830, it basically stays around 835 for seven or eight years, and then it drops again in the last two years to 803, and then 777. But we really end up higher than we are now around the 830s for most of the period. The last two years, I mean, who knows how accurate that is? It is plus or minus 12.9%, which is shown on this slide. The difference, the green line is enrollment from the district, the purple line is the total, and the difference, of course, is the tuition students. This chart shows the total population, the purple being the high school level, the yellow being the middle school level, and the green being the elementary school level. As you can see, you have the high school declining, but the middle school going up slightly at the end of the period, and the, well, that's because it's being pushed up actually by the elementary school. The middle school declines, the elementaries go down to the low point in 2021, then come back up, as we discussed. Now, this chart shows the plus and minus range. So we start out in 2016 with that yellow line, and then the projected total is the blue dots, the plus range is the purple, and the minus range is the yellow. So as you can see, we've got a slight decline projected, but if you go with the plus end of the range, we'd actually have an increase. So in summary, enrollment is projected to remain over 2,000 for the entire projection period, and declines by only 109 in the 10 years. We've assumed full-day kindergarten, and the size of the kindergarten class remains close to the current level of 116 for five more years, based on those years of low births. But it rises up as high as 127 in 2026, 27. And these seem like really low numbers, but you've got to remember that we grade progress that every year, and every year that's greater than 100%. So kids are moving into the district throughout the entire period of 12 grades. So you start with a kindergarten of that size, and by the time you get to high school, you have a class size that is quite a bit bigger. The number of elementary school students will decrease to 2021, as I mentioned, where the schools are at parity, and then rebounds to 660 in total. Middle school enrollment drops by about 90 kids over 10 years, and the high school enrollment, as I said before, rises from 766, remains between 830 and 840 for six years, and finally, at the end of the period, drops to 777. And that includes 160 tuition students. So, are there any questions?
Lisa, over the years, I've noticed that the PEP program isn't calculated in this, correct?
Correct.
And since they occupy real estate in the high school, do you think we should be or not, should not be including them? And I just wondered what your thoughts were on that.
Well, I'm not sure what the requirements are for PEP, but I was under the impression that not all students are eligible for, not all students of preschool age are eligible.
That's correct. It's about 30 kids per year, give or take.
So if you're limiting it to that, then that's going to be the answer.
In terms of the total projection of the district?
We can only project based on independent variables that we know. If you have, or if the district sets requirements or eligibility requirements, and those can change over time, and we have no way of telling how many kids might meet those requirements, so I don't think we can do it.
Kenny?
A few things. One, just thank you for your incredibly excellent work, as always.
You're welcome.
Better you than me. I appreciate it. And Denise Day is with you as well.
Yes, she is. Yes, I should have thanked Denise also, because she is the most constant attendee at our meetings.
So a few thoughts and a few questions. One, I'm really glad to see that you're starting to incorporate that real estate data and even employment data.
Well, we're trying. We're gathering the data, and Allison has been wonderful. She came in this year and replaced Tom Merrick, who was a great contributor, but she has this expertise and she has access to the real estate data, so we're just starting to work with that.
I think that's great. Totally get why, now that we have full-day K, you've switched your methodology to predict first grade. Wonder if it's important to correlate what's happened at our kind of pre-K daycare kind of centers, because did they have a decrease in enrollment which would correlate with our bump in enrollment in K? And if they didn't, might we still get sandbagged or surprised with first grade?
Well, we'll find out next year. Not to be flip, we, for many years, were trying to build a preschool database in terms of the size of the classes, the size of the kindergarten classes, the origin of the students, what towns they lived in. And although several of our committee members had worked on this, we never had enough data to do anything with, because to build these regression models, you always need at least 10 years of data, according to our chief economist, Michael Goldberg. And so we tried doing that and couldn't. We could get anecdotal evidence by talking to the CSDC and other larger preschools that also offer first grade, and maybe we should do that, especially this year since we had the full-day K, and see if they saw any change.
And then two other things. The high school peaked out at 837, and what is the capacity of our high school? What are we thinking that to be?
Well, it all depends on what you wanted to find as capacity. The technical capacity of the high school is over 1,200 kids. The board tried to keep a limit on that when we were discussing enrollment at the high school at close to 800.
So, okay, so that's that. And then the last question. Understanding how you're predicting kindergarten, but then you do predict kindergarten, you know, out as far as 2022, 23, how do you do that?
Good question. I skipped over that part. We also have a multiple linear regression to predict births after the five years that we know. Because we're projecting, as you say, kindergarten for 10 years out, five of those years, we know how many kids were born five years ago, but for the next five, we don't. So we do have a regression equation to predict that, and what I can tell you, because I just looked at the numbers, is that it peaks out in the high 80s. It pretty much stays at 88, 89 for those five years, which is about where we are this year. So it's a pretty flat projection. That might or not be the case, because you've got factors demographically working both ways.
Thank you for your excellent work.
Okay, thank you.
It seems to me, one, this kind of jumps ahead to a decision we're going to have to make later on, but one of the stories I take from this is that there is going to be pressure on the high school electives, or the high school core, going forward. There's pressure now, as I understand it, in certain areas, social studies, and I think that's going to increase as, because I think these numbers are pretty firm now, because we're just talking about one or two or three years out. And so that the pressure on high school offerings is going to increase as it goes up 30 next year, then it goes up and goes up until about, gets to about 830. So that there's going to be pressure, and it's going to increase, and it's going to stay up for a while.
Yes.
I think this is really useful to think through that decision. So thanks for that.
Okay.
I just had one quick comment. Actually, it's kind of related to that, is that, first of all, this is the rosiest projection I've seen in like five years.
Yeah, exactly.
But I think more to that, it was like five years ago, really, from long-range planning, that you guys, in predicting the decline, kind of led the way for us to come up with a tuition agreement, which has been tremendously beneficial for Oyster River and I think for Bering. And so, you know, and when you look at it now, five years later, it was really a good thing to bring up.
Yeah, thank you.
And Lisa, just so the board knows, there's a lot of work that I do. I'm probably your biggest fan. I've got the tiers where I want to get to the immediate issues, I've got the coffee stains, you know, you give it to me in one day, and by the time I get through going through it over the course of a year, it is very dog-eared, and I really appreciate the work, because the board often is asking me, you know, what I think about certain issues, like the middle school and its replacement, you know, we're out three years, what kind of, what kind of size should we be building for? You know, we use your numbers for a whole host of, your team's numbers for a whole host of issues, and we all know that in, as close as we possibly can to the day that you're making the projections, they're the most accurate, and we account for the fact that the further we go out the 10 years.
Right.
They become less accurate. But I really have learned to use the document to its greatest possible extent, so thank you for the work you're doing this.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, draft budget proposal, does this refer to the memo that you sent?
Yep. So at the last meeting, we had, the board asked me to do a very specific, address five specific issues. So when we were putting out the materials, at the time that we were putting the materials together and sending them out to you, I thought, okay, this addresses, I went through, yeah, I see where, you know, the board wanted this, the board wanted that, and so forth. But then I had a dream. And I'm not exaggerating when I say this. I started dreaming through what the board had asked me to do, and so as a result of that, yesterday, I restructured the whole memo, made sure you got it in email today, and it's in your packet. So specifically, I'd like to go through that memo.
So is it, I'm sorry, so is the one that you have in our packet different than the one that you emailed us? Is that?
Nope, same.
Oh, it is the same. Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was looking at the right thing, so, okay.
So, again, all this information was in the Friday release to you, but I decided to reformulate it along the five points that Tom asked of me at the workshop. So the five points were, keep the budget impact to 3.25%. So, you know, as we've gone through this discussion, I've been very straightforward that the typical way that we've constructed a budget is we've cut the budget to match the board's goal. And we did not do that this year. What we set as a goal is to keep the impact of the budget to 3.25%. The way that I've done that in this recommended proposal is to bring the budget to a, actually at this point, 4.6%. So somebody would look at our budget and say, wait, that's not 3.25, it's 4.6. They would be right. However, what we also set in the goal was that we would use new revenue to lower the overall impact of the budget, and that's what we've done by utilizing the Barrington funds and also some of our emergency funds. So it is a true statement that our budget, as it is presented, is at 4.6. It's also a true statement. It's also a true statement that the budget as presented reaches the impact threshold of 3.25, which is what the board wanted. It becomes complicated because revenue does not lower the percentage. Revenue, new revenue substitutes for tax dollars. So I hope that's really clear. And if it's not, I've got Sue here. One of the other issues that the board asked me to do is to reduce the dependency on the proposed budget on emergency funding. And I recommended that we take out the spare position that we kept in at the elementary level, just in case. And the reason I did that was just in case doesn't rise to the level of we need. And I felt that just in case could be addressed if the health insurance actual cost comes in lower in the spring. So right now, we're facing a health insurance cost, a guaranteed maximum of 14.1%. Last year, we faced an impact of 16.8, and it came in at 8.8. Can't guarantee that that's going to happen in a given year. I gave you the history. Some years it does, some years it doesn't. But I felt the high school issue was the paramount issue we need to be focusing on. So I have reduced the dependency on emergency funding by the $200,000 I recommended, including the ELO position in the high school. You know, really, the board has three approaches to this. The first one is you could increase the budget by $100,000. But clearly, in this environment, that's not anybody's first choice, including mine. The board could use the retirement incentive to free up funds by some of the yellow sheet positions. The yellow sheet positions that I would be advocating for address enrollment increases only. So I see those as the needs, not the wants. And the ELO position in particular, we have, right now, our counseling staff is dealing with over 300 students between V-Lax, college courses, internships, and job shadowing. Granted, internships and job shadowing are the smallest piece of that. But that's the part we want to grow. The retirement incentive to offset increases. So without an incentive, as has been pointed out, we see two or three retirements a year. So I thought, well, this might be the year that we would see at least three, just because we've been talking about a retirement incentive for so long. A number of staff have already gone out and researched, you know, what the possibility financially of them retiring. So in that regard, without an incentive, I do think we'd see three. But with an incentive, I think we'll see many more. And the retirement incentive can do a couple of things. One, it allows us to buy the have-to positions at the high school due to enrollment growth. And the middle school proposal for increasing a math para to a full-time math teacher, that will help us address the algebra enrollment issue, which is a great issue to have. Four years ago, we were facing 30 kids in algebra. Today, we have 121. So it's an amazing problem, and it's a wonderful problem, but it's one we still have to address. Jay has a couple other ways that he's going to address this issue, but that staffing is critical. And then the high school strings program is growing. I mean, we're so fortunate to have the teacher we have in strings. And rather than propose a teacher, we're just proposing increasing the number of hours that a tutor could help her do the program. She has literally knocked it out of the park, which is why the pressure is on enrollment. So the retirement incentive is important if we want to deal with those issues. And then maintaining the effort on capital improvement. Clearly, last year's budget, we faced a situation where we did not live up to our strategic plan goal of increasing the capital fund by $200,000 a year until it reached about 3% of the value of all the school buildings, which is about $1.3 million. We're at $733,000 this year. The $200,000 would bring us up to 933. Nodding it, Sue, yes, that number's pretty close, if it's not exact. So, you know, the board always has the option of doing what we had to do last year and not funding it. But that just means that we get into that pattern that we all agreed to, we wanted to not be in, which is not make sure these buildings are maintained to the level that you want them maintained. Quick story. Yesterday, state police came in with a dog, the bomb squad. The first reaction they had when they were done, other than clearing the building, was this is the cleanest building they have ever been in. And that was a quote. So congrats to Jim and the custodial staff and across the district. So, you know, we have done a fantastic job of moving that ball forward. I'd hate for us to start to go backwards on that issue. So that's my dream memo, literally. And I hope that it captures, from all the other information I gave you on Friday, where we are to date and the discussion before us.
Just one question. The 200 recommended additional cuts, that's not the retirement incentive, is it?
No. Well, it would be, not the incentive, no. It's the $100,000 we're carrying in the elementary program, just in case. And it would be $100,000 of retirement without incentive. So if you want that number to grow, the incentive will make it grow.
Okay. I have a question. This is like, if you go to the discussion, to the proposed FYI budget Part II PDF, and this is the nightmare, not the dream. That's the Sue one. You break the numerical, your thing. So on there, actually, and this caught my eye, actually, in the last slide we had. So to bring the 4.6% increase in expenditure, which was the teacher's contract and the Fund 10, down to 3.25% impact, it was $543,759 we had to come up with. And then if you look over on the revised thing, what adds up to is $643,759. So in there, it's like proposing to reduce our tax impact to the towns, which I think in Durham, it was like, this is going off the back of my memory, about 4.17%, and Madbury is about 3.25%. But when we do that tax impact, we're actually going above and beyond our goal. In terms of like our impact, our goal was that the global budget impact was 3.25%. That was like, and I know this is not the right way to say it, but that was our expenses minus our revenue. We're using revenue to offset it. But if we throw that extra $100,000 in there to like mitigate the tax impact to Durham and Lee, we've actually made our goal go from 3.25% to 3. Does that make sense to you?
Yep.
So we've actually exceeded our goal in that. So I just wanted to, if you don't get that? Okay, so it's like, in order to do our goal, we could not spend more than, it was about $1,300 and change. I can't remember the exact numbers. And so when you're looking at this, what we've done is we've, we're going beyond what our goal was, and we're beginning to look at what the tax impact is on the town. That really wasn't what our goal was.
So.
It's a good goal. I mean, it's a good thing to do. But I'm just saying, you've got to be aware that if we use the Barrington tuition, we use the emergency tax relief, and then we use the additional emergency tax relief, we're actually reducing our impact, the global impact, that was supposed to be 3.25% to 3.
So my understanding was we should keep, the impact we're aiming for is 3.25, right? And so to lower, you know, to lower it at this point wouldn't make any, I mean, you know, you could lower it to mitigate the tax, but I think right now, we should be aiming for 3.25. Is that your understanding?
That's my understanding. I think we should just clarify, I mean, Sue had it in there. There is a tax impact that will come down to each of the towns. And again, I'm doing this off the top of my head, but I think it was like Durham, if we don't do that additional $100,000, it's like 4.47%.
4.18 for Durham.
That's with the addition. If you don't do the $100,000, it's like 4.47 or something like that. Then Madbury, or no, was it Lee goes to like 3.31. I'm sorry to be throwing all these numbers out there. But, so the tax, that's a different goal than our board goal.
Does everybody get that?
What Al just, what Al just said is absolutely correct. And it was a discussion that Sue and I had. And I looked at the impact on the three towns, because I was looking at the global impact. And I was trying to ensure that not only did we meet that goal, but that we lowered the impact on the three towns as much as possible based on what I thought was affordable from the emergency funds. So I did make that executive decision. I own it. But I was trying to watch, you know, where I, you're right, I went past the goal, which means that I probably should have my hands slapped.
No, it's making it more passable.
Exactly.
For the taxpayers when we have to sell the budget. I just wanted to clarify that that's actually what we're doing.
Yep. You're absolutely right, Al.
So is the budget, is the budget now aiming for an impact of 3.25 or 3? Because if you're adding that extra $100,000, you're at 3.
Yep.
I mean, where are we?
We're at 3 with this proposed impact. I just felt that, as Al alluded to, when I looked at the impact on the three towns, I felt we were getting to that place where the community would say, you know, what are you thinking?
Yeah. Can I, I just want to, because I think it's actually a really good idea. I mean, the way I saw you guys structuring this right now, I think you've done about everything, you've used about every single tool you can to not only meet our goal, but to mitigate the tax impact, to make it more likely we can pass the budget. So I think that's really good. When I look at this, it only further said to me the need that you really need the retirement incentive. We've used literally everything in our toolbox. And when you look at the high school and you look at the long-range planning, we are, you know, I think the retirement incentives gives us the funding that we're going to need to meet what's going to happen at the high school. So, I mean, again, I give you guys, I think this is really well done. And again, exceeding our goal is not a bad thing, because again, it shows that we've done everything we possibly can to be fiscally responsible.
Thanks.
So the way I read this memo is that one of the only tools we have to move forward with absolutely necessary positions that deals with the expansion of the students in the high school. The current pressure and the anticipated increased pressure is to have some retirement incentive. Otherwise, I think we have no tool to move forward. That's what I see.
And if I could just add a conversation I had with leadership of the Guild, you know, recognizing where we are in time, I wanted to put a very short due date on firm letters of commitment. And the Guild agreed with me. So I would make the date for staff to commit, if the board goes forward, December 20th. So when we get to this December 21st meeting, I would be able to share firm numbers with you that night. The Guild thinks that that's reasonable, given that this conversation has been going on at the board level now for, you know, a number of weeks. And people who are wrapping their head around possibly retiring are, have already got their ducks in a row, so to speak. They've talked to their financial advisor, they've talked to the state, or they're ready to roll as soon as the board is.
Denise and Kenny, it's.
So just to make sure I'm understood, so what you're saying, so what we would do tonight is to, you know, authorize you to kind of go forward with that, but we're keeping it, assuming we do this, keeping it open in terms of the number.
Exactly.
And then on the 21st, we would actually vote on the actual number that we're accepting.
Exactly.
And just to make sure that I'm clear, is that by voting tonight, in terms of the general way, we're not committing to a specific number of retirement.
Right, you're committing to the incentive.
Right.
But then I would bring back the specific.
Right.
Savings, and you would act on what number.
What number, okay.
Am I right in saying, I mean, the other option is we can go deeper into what we call our kind of emergency funds. And if that's the case, to me, it's defeating the purpose of them. When we have such a useful tool as doing the retirement incentive, we're still keeping some powder dry when we really, really need it. So it makes perfect sense to me.
Sue, you're absolutely right, Ken. You can use more of the emergency money, but we're using just slightly less than half of it. And, you know, there are going to be other years, and we're going to want to populate those accounts with voter approval with additional funds, so that the next time something dramatic like this happens, we're in a good place still. So in my conversations with Tom, we really wanted to stay away from using 100% of our emergency funds.
Because that would put our back against the wall.
Yep.
In future years, we'd have no recourse.
So I'm wondering if we have a motion, I mean, obviously, the thing we have to do tonight is we have to decide on whether we're going to authorize Dr. Morse to go develop this list of people who might benefit from the retirement incentive fund.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the superintendent to offer a retirement incentive that is uncapped.
Okay. Moved by Al. Seconded by.
Did we have that motion?
Do we, I can't remember, it was like.
It was postponed.
Right.
To today.
That's right. You're right.
Was that your motion? I was not at that meeting.
Yeah, that was the motion.
Okay, so that motion, so bring it back on the table?
Yep.
Okay. So the motion is back on the table. Is there a second? Seconded by Kenny?
I guess it was seconded.
Kenny was seconded. I made the motion and Kenny seconded.
Okay, okay. So it's on the table, moved and seconded, open for discussion.
And then, again, just to make, I think it's what Denise was saying, it's going to come back to us again as we.
Right.
Approve how deep we want to go into it, if anything. So it just, it starts the process, but we can always revise as we go on.
Yes.
I just want to point that out as well.
Okay. Maria?
This whole budget discussion makes me really nervous, because we're not talking about next year, the year after. I think we're in deep, in deep trouble with the way things are going, with what I hear about people being appointed that are not really that supportive of public education. And to start using emergency funds for this year, I think we're, the emergency hasn't started yet. And that makes me really uncomfortable. And if I look at the senior citizens of this community, they're getting a .03 increase in their social security. I read somewhere, that's about $200 a year. That doesn't cover this increase in taxes. So all in all, I feel like I'm between a rock and a hard place. And happy that this is the next to last budget that I have to be involved in, because I think things are going to get really tough.
Denise?
And I hear what you're saying, Maria. I think the incentive, that's even, to me, even more reason why the time is right to do this incentive now, because that is only going to put us in a better position. I mean, we can't, there's so much that we're not going to be able to control, but this can help us to be in a better position down the road. Because again, with these retirement incentives, we're talking about savings that roll, you know what I mean, that roll year after year in terms of, so, I mean, the retirement incentive can only help us. It certainly isn't going to hurt. I mean, the retirement incentive can only help us. It certainly isn't going to hurt, you know, in this situation.
They don't roll year after year.
They get smaller.
Well, they get smaller. I get that. But you, you know, I mean, it's still, it's not, it's not something that, that we only, you know, recoup like in the one year, you know, or I guess I'm not saying that right. But it helps to, and it does help to balance. I think it helps to balance, you know, our staffing. And certainly, I, you know, I'm not in favor of like massive, like, you know, in terms of a number that I would be comfortable approving, because I've always said, you know, I wouldn't be comfortable having too many people retire all at once, because you want to keep that balance. But you do want to have a balance. And I think that this can help us with that.
Al, then back to you.
You know, so I, maybe it's, you know, seeing that long-range planning projections has made me a little bit rosier than that, you know, horrible future that we face. But I have to say, I'm incredibly impressed by what the administrative team has put together, because we've hit the trifecta, and I don't mean it in a good way. I mean, when you count health insurance, retirement, and special ed, any one of those items is generally enough to sink a budget. And we can weather it. And not only that, are we weathering it, we're not exhausting all of our emergency funds. And more to my point, there's the opportunity that we can do things to improve our system. So that is an amazing accomplishment. So, you know, is the future going to be tough? Probably. And will we have to adapt to it? Yes. But I think in front of us, our goal is, what can we do to be fiscally responsible to the taxpayers, and try to improve the Oyster River District? And this really does do it. And I think the retirement incentive is necessary for us. Again, Lisa couldn't have pointed out any bigger, there's a bump going through the high school. We need to have the tools to be able to address it. So I think I'm a little more optimistic.
Maria?
I've asked for this once before, or a couple of times before, that we have a computer set up for policies, so we can look them up. I don't know what our policy on hiring staff says. As I recall, it says we should hire the best, which does not guarantee that we get them cheaper. And if the retirement incentive is to get cheaper staff, maybe we should look at that policy. And say, hire cheap. But right now, it says hire the best, so.
The best doesn't necessarily translate into the most experienced. You can hire great people for less money. And if you look at the track record, we had one year where that whole thing blew up on us. We have not had a single year since where it's blown up on us. We've been very good at hiring really great people at the beginning, in the middle, and at the top. So, you know, your issue about no guarantee, you're absolutely right. But you have an administrative team that's very cognizant of hiring the best, which does not now translate into hiring the most expensive. When we have specific positions, you're going to find costs go down. Elementary positions will get 90-plus applicants. But if we had a high school counseling position open, as an example, generally, those people have experience and master's degrees, and we have to account for the opening that is created. On the other end of the extreme, which is a conversation we had at the last meeting, there, there is at least one position that I see in the list where I don't feel like we have to replace the position at all. So there's going to be that range of savings from nominal to very high. And that I'm confident of, Maria. The administrators have done a really good job in the last two years of making sure we hire the best without necessarily translating that into the most expensive.
Kenny?
I, I respect very much and agree with you. We are between a rock and a hard place, both us here sitting on the school board, and many people in the community with their finances. And, and I kind of, looking at it philosophically, maybe in a little different light. The core of our board has been together for several years now. And I take pride in that we did not feel that our school system was good, and therefore, we just maintain. I think we've continued to try to advance our schools and to build. And that does come with a price. And I think being more severe with a budget will mean the beginning to dismantle some of what we've worked hard to put in place. And, and maybe from that larger view, as Alex to say, looking down from, you know, 50,000 feet, I can't think of anything more important we can do for the kids of our community in this challenging world, to have a super school system. Because the world, just as our budget is harder, the world they're going into is harder. And this is an investment that will just, it will pay off in spades for the kids of our district. And it's why I have qualms about spending the public's money. It's troublesome, but I think it's well spent. And I wholeheartedly would endorse doing that.
Sarah?
It's hard, because there are so many issues sort of at play here. It's the retirement incentive, it's the, what do we do with the money if we do the retirement incentive? It's, are we happy with the budget even without thinking of that retirement incentive? And I think I kept going back to sort of conversations we had when we were building a strategic plan, because that gets thrown out a lot. And I remember going, well, are we trying to build this as a pie in the sky? Would I really, what would be ideal? Or are we trying to build this as, as something that is reasonable to afford? And the answer that kept being given back to me is, you know, we're really building a roadmap. And that's what the strategic plan is. And that we're going to, we're going to build it, and we're going to take it on at a rate at which we can move through it. And at a rate that we can feel that it's acceptable and appropriate to increase taxes. And so, we have been hit with many things this year. You know, so we've got, you know, the things that we've been hit with the past two years. So the, the portion, our portion of the retirement is increasing. The potential health insurance is, is high again this year, and it didn't manifest last year. This year, specific to this year, is the special ed costs. And I guess I, I keep coming back to the fact, you know, when you say that this is important for our kids. I absolutely believe that education is the most important thing that we could give our kids. And a good education is the most important thing we could give our kids. But that's why I strongly believe in paying teachers well. And that's why I strongly believe in professional development. I don't necessarily believe that, you know, I mean, at times, it feels like we're just throwing money at it to try to fix things. And I don't necessarily think that's the way to do it. So I guess as far as the retirement incentive goes, I absolutely see the positives and the benefits of it. I am, you know, I see bringing young staff in as a benefit in many respects. I think there's, you can, Oyster River draws really strong candidates. I was a little surprised at the memo on the retirement incentive, seeing that when we were pricing out salaries, that we were looking at all teachers with bachelors. I think it's, I think it's rare. Certainly, in what I've seen in a New Hampshire school district, a high-performing district, I think it's rare that you're pulling people in with bachelors. I can believe step one, step zero even, but I think most of these people are coming in with masters. And I guess my question would be, what does that do to these numbers? If you're taking hire a teacher at a master, step two, what does that do to those?
Well, if you go back to my original memo, and I had articulated, way back, I had articulated the savings of $20,000. That was based on masters plus six.
Okay.
And I asked, since you had that net savings, I asked Sue to do it, and what would the maximum savings be? So we took the actual people who have expressed interest in retiring, and used theirs at the bachelor's level. So you had the master's level in my previous memo. This gives you the bachelor's level. So the range of savings should be anywhere between, well, you could potentially, going back to Maria's issue, you could potentially have a zero savings if the position that was open was one that was in short supply. But predictably, you could count on about $20,000 savings. And then, in the maximum case, which is in Sue's memo, you'd be, I think it approaches 30, is it, what is it, the 30?
Yeah, 34, 12.
Yeah, 34. So there's, the predictable is 20. The most is going to be, well, the most is you don't replace the position. But if we replace the position, it could be as high as 34, and as low as zero. But the 20 that I used in my original memo was based on what we have experienced in, in the past together.
So I mean, I do see the advantage of bringing, regardless of money, I see the advantage of bringing in some young staff. I, I guess what has sort of put a, slowed me down on the excitement of the whole retirement incentive, is hearing the number of people that are really thinking of retiring. And okay, if we have 21 people, 24 people thinking of retiring with the incentive, do we really need an incentive? Are these people just ready to retire? And they're happy to, you know, happy to move on to a different phase of life?
So I can address that too, Sarah, because almost, almost every letter that's come in is contingent if there is a retirement incentive. The, and that's when, I agree with you, that we would absolutely probably see two or three. There's no question in my mind. But I think a lot of people on staff would retire only if there was an incentive to retire. And they've been clear, in conversations with the Guild, they've been clear in conversations with me. So if we're looking for, you know, the greatest impact on dollars, the incentive would do that. Without an incentive, I think we'll be at the traditional level, maybe a hair more. But the people are not going to jump into retirement without any health insurance, and that money gets them the health insurance.
Yeah?
So, you know, I think a lot of what I've been thinking about has been said, and many more things, actually. You know, I will restate my concern about using this tool, this retirement incentive, so frequently. You know, we're essentially pulling the trigger for the second time in three years. And, you know, in the first year, as we've discussed, you know, I think with any organization, there's a balance that has to be struck between getting the best teachers to replace teachers that are outgoing, and sort of, you know, balancing your model. And there's a lot of different factors in that. And I think one of the key ones is, is that, you know, I hope we strive, and continue to strive, to achieve a balance of individual teachers who are at different phases of their career path. You know, so that the, the knowledge, expertise, and leadership of those outgoing is in some way transferred to those incoming. And we're sort of, you know, it's sort of a succession plan in the back of our minds as we, as we look at all of this. You know, we're in a tough spot here. I, you know, I've come around to supporting the idea of the incentive. But, you know, as Maria said, and others, you know, we are a board for this year, and this board will change next year. So we shouldn't be making decisions based on next year's budget. With, but however, I think we have a responsibility and obligation to create something that positions next year's board to be successful, to position, you know, our community to not have to bear the burden of unforeseen circumstances. So for example, not draining entirely our emergency reserves. So, you know, I guess I'm just, I'm still a little uncomfortable, but I think there's a lot of factors that we certainly just don't control. We've mentioned them. And, but I do want to second Maria's thought on examining the hiring policy. Because, you know, I think it would be a worthwhile exercise to sort of just walk through it and understand it better, if nothing else, and perhaps tweak it based on what we've learned. And I will echo something Dr. Morse said, which is, I'm, I'm given greater confidence having seen the hiring that was done last year, as opposed to two years ago. Because, you know, I think first and foremost, we got amazing people in. And I saw a real attention to, you know, trying to work within the confines of the budget. So I thought that was very well done, and I see every indication that that will continue. So I'm, I'm, I'm supporting it at this point.
So are we ready to vote on this? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Six in favor, all those opposed, one opposed. So motion passes six to one. So you'll come to us next meeting with your plan.
I'll get the memo out tomorrow to the staff.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have a draft warrant article to look at, is that?
Yes.
Is that number four?
So I think what I did here, I added an article, Article Five. And this was after a conversation, I think I mentioned to you that the trustee of the trust fund wants to clean up some of those warrants out there. And this was the suggested language to try, number one, to discontinue the track fund. And then, there was another, actually, we have two here, yeah. And then Article Six would be, and you can see all the different funds we want to combine into one, so that we can clean up these funds. So I don't, you know, it's the first draft of it. We can certainly look at it a little more. But I just want to know if you're in favor of that concept, too.
I only have like five.
I only have five on mine.
You do?
Yeah.
Do we have six?
So Mike, actually, I have a question on it, too, because it's like.
I have seven.
I think it, I think we may have gotten an older version.
I think we did.
Yeah.
Because I'm looking only five.
Because I'm like looking at the older one, which I think has more of what you're talking about on it.
And I'm looking at the agenda that was posted online, and it has all seven of them. So can you go to that?
Is it in your folders?
Oh.
Just every, check your blue folders and see if it's in there.
We have it on here.
Not in there, but it was on the.
It is on something.
12/7, it was on the last meeting.
The last meeting.
Yeah, and that's what I'm looking at. I'm looking at that version. That's, so you must have gotten the wrong one in your packet.
I know that's what I was looking at.
So you haven't seen that at all?
It's what's in their electronic packet. Sue is just through Article Five.
Yeah, and I don't get that. I go off the one that was posted online.
So my question actually is like, so we were taking, it's kind of like, actually, the question I asked the last time, the last time we were taking money out, I said, should we put money into the benefit stabilization? This time, we're only taking money out of, what is it called, the emergency relief fund? The $238,000 we're taking to raise our revenue is coming out of the, I think it was the emergency relief fund.
It can be either or. We don't, you don't have to make that decision.
But I was like, so whatever fund we're taking it out of.
Right.
The warrant should reflect that we refill it.
Well, the warrant, two different things. That can, that will happen when we get to tax rate setting. You can make that decision as to which fund you want to take it out of.
Okay.
But I think in your original warrant, there was, yes, there was Article, I think, is it still Article Four? Again, I'm going off the first.
Four is the facilities development capital reserve fund.
Okay, so the warrant has changed. The new warrant has.
Yeah, on this one, it's changed.
Yeah. So the new warrant is Article Four, is to add to that benefit stabilization fund. So should we have additional funding? We've put that back on there.
So two things I could do, Tom. One, we could delay discussion. But I think that we could get Alex to make copies of the hard copy, so you're all looking at the same thing. So Alex, would you mind making quick copies for the board? I apologize for the confusion, guys.
Sorry.
Can we maybe go to something else and come back to this?
Yeah, sure.
Go to the calendar.
Let's do that.
Okay.
So the calendar is in your packet, is a draft. It's based on communication with Dover, Barrington, and Somersworth. The reason those are the four school systems we talk to is that's where our Vokes School kids go. They go to Somersworth and Dover. I asked Heather yesterday, did we need to do both Vokes Schools? And she said, actually, the programs are different at both, both schools. So since we have the opportunity to use them, we should. So there's no action tonight on the calendar. It was basically to get in front of you, to get you to have a couple of weeks with it, and then we'd be prepared to answer any questions that you have.
Okay.
Unless you want a question right now.
Sarah?
I'm just looking, I had asked about it with last year's calendar. I just want to make sure I'm reading this correctly. So now, there is, the kindergartens are starting on the same day as everybody else.
I'm going to defer to. I'm going to defer to Carrie and Todd. Have we had a conversation yet with the kindergarten on the first day, about the first day and changing practice? I would say, from the looks on their faces, not yet.
Okay, because it just, I read this as saying that everyone starts on the same day.
We have a kindergarten meeting set up for January, and we'll have that conversation with the kindergarten staff.
Great, thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
And then, just while Alex is passing this out, the distinguished service award, that is something that the board shifted to administration, and we're having that discussion. If any board member has a name that would like to be considered, we already have nominations from outside the community. The administrative team is working on nominations that they would put forward. So, if board members have any, if you would just send them to me or Wendy, that would be great. And then, we'll be making that decision soon. That brings us back to the warrants, Sue.
So, Article One, Two, Three are the same.
Yeah.
So, we changed Article Four. I don't know what, but that is the one, you just asked about Al, where we would add additional funds to replenish that.
Could we scratch surplus?
And then, Article Five is the article that I mentioned, that we would discontinue the track fund. Obviously, since the project is done, we wanted to eliminate that fund. And then Article Six is the one that I talked about, where we would combine a number of funds that we have out there that have various different names, but all sort of accomplish the same thing, and that's facilities replacement, development, and maintenance. Incorporate those all into one fund. And you can see on there, it lists those various funds and the balances that are in there.
Yeah. You know, the only thing about that is, it seems almost confusing, because we have the capital improvement, I'm gonna get that one wrong, whatever that long one was.
Yep, capital replacement fund. School building maintenance fund.
So, it's like, can you, can you merge it to make the capital improvement and maintenance fund?
Well, that's what we did. We, to establish, we would establish a facilities replacement, development, and maintenance trust.
Okay.
So, that's what it would all be called, and it would merge the current capital replacement fund, school building maintenance fund, and the athletics facilities fund, all into one.
Okay.
You still have one capital reserve, which is a completely different animal from these, which you have to have voter approval. That still exists.
Yeah.
So, we're not talking about touching that. That's still there. It's just these trusts, these expendable trust funds.
Okay.
That we want to get into one place. And the thing about that, too, is it gives you more flexibility in what you use them for. You don't have to be specific. I mean, you've got all of, all the ground covered with replacement, development, and maintenance.
Right.
It kind of gives you that. So, I mean, you don't have to decide on them, but is the concept something you think?
It's like a housekeeping.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
So, again, you're not finalizing tonight, because you don't have numbers. That'll happen on the 21st, as you decide ultimately what the budget's going to be. Sue will be ready to insert the numbers, and we can go from there.
Okay. A minor thing, and I'm sure you all would pick it up. But to replace the vice chair's name.
Replace, what's that?
Yeah.
Change the vice chair.
Yeah.
Where are you looking?
That was a good catch. Good catch. Good catch.
And it needs to be Denise.
Oh, okay.
Got it.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so, any other questions about these? Can you move on? Okay. So, we've talked about the distinguished award, because that's, that's in process of being selected, right?
That's in process.
I've looked at the calendar.
Any board member has a name, send them to me or Wendy.
Okay. Dr. Morse and I were talking, because I know Suzanne and Heather would be, were here to speak possibly about the ELO position and the high school needs. But Jeb and I were thinking that, would they come in the next meeting? Because I think you'll have a plan of this, these are the positions we want to go for on, from these yellow sheets.
And the pink.
What?
And the pink.
The pink sheet.
Yellow and pink.
Yellow and pink. The yellow and the pink sheets, that, and then the rationale for why those are the positions that are going to be, what they'd like to see as part of the budget. So, is that, rather than deal with that now, I think that would be the appropriate time to deal with it. Is that right?
We don't know how much we have.
Yeah.
I guess the only, the only thing I'm just trying, in terms of timeframe here, all right, so we're coming in next meeting, you know, we have that list of, you know, potential retirement incentives, and we make that decision that night in terms of how many. But Dr. Morse isn't going to have the number that we're going to approve. So, that's going to have to carry over till the meeting in January?
You can make all of those decisions that night.
Okay. And you, but you'll just give us the list of prior, in terms of the priority. It's like, okay, if we have this much money, you know, this is the one that we, okay, and do it that way.
Yeah.
Because then you kind of know how much you're dealing with. And then, okay, given this amount to deal with, we, these are the, these are the most critical spots to use that.
Right, okay. And just the one additional thing is, I just really appreciate getting that report on the ELO and the research and all of that. That was very helpful. So, thank you to Heather McEnoff for getting that to us.
Okay. So, we have, we need a motion to approve the Oyster River Middle School Jazz Band Overnight Field Trip, which I think is a pretty regular event.
Yep, every other year.
Yeah, okay. Okay, you have a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the Oyster River Middle School Jazz Band Overnight Field Trip for May 18th, 2017, to May 22nd, 2017.
Approved by Denise, seconded by Dan. Discussion on this? Maria?
I was looking for a policy on field trips and couldn't find one.
On field trips?
Yeah. And I'm wondering why we vote on them.
That is a great question.
Because we always.
Because I hate to vote on things that aren't down to the numbers. Fifteen teachers and parents' chaperones. Well, what if they don't come up with that? Or 16 or 17 people will go. Then I have voted, or the board has voted, that there will be 15. And why are we doing this?
I think you're doing it because it is a past practice of the board. I think raising the question about what you should approve on field trips and what you should not approve on field trips is an excellent question. That should be sent to policy, because I think in some cases, not this particular one, but in some cases, the board is extending its personal liability on a trip that is organized by a private company. That would be one of the issues that I would like to address on a field trip policy. So, I think if you could send that to policy, that would be a great thing.
So, you want us to vote on this?
Yes, I do want you to vote on that. Yes, I do.
Look at the policy.
Look at the policy.
And then, we'll look at the policy.
Actually, I find it difficult to find policies. I go to the website and.
I think I can find one, Maria, because I've done this one before.
IGOA.
IGOA?
IGOA.
Okay.
Are we ready to vote on this one?
Thanks, Todd.
All those in favor, please raise your hands.
Hmm, halfway.
Six and a half in favor.
Six and a half, okay.
Seven in favor. Field trip is approved. School Board Committee updates? Hello?
I would like to, once the New Hampshire School Board Association gets all their stuff together, that it be an agenda item that we all agree that I should go to Concord and say yes on these resolutions.
When is that meeting?
So.
It's the end of.
Is that like a field trip approval?
Do we have a policy on that?
I don't know.
Maria, would the board authorize those resolutions? What would be the purpose of saying?
I'm supposed to vote on all the other people's resolutions.
Oh, I see. To authorize you to vote on all the other ones?
Right, exactly.
Okay.
So, it's sometime towards the end of January.
Yeah.
So, it could be on the first.
Okay.
I know Krista Butt's always brought it to us to vote on. Also, 68 Hours of Hunger and 68 Hours of Hunger. I still say we have some extraordinary people working on that, and I'm not included in that. But they're planning a big fundraising dinner at the Joyner, on the 18th.
At, I'm sorry, where?
The Joyner.
At the restaurant in New Market. All you can eat and drink. But we have.
Oh, you can drink?
A school board meeting that night.
Awesome.
On the January 18th. So, unless we can move our school board meeting to the Tuesday or Thursday. We'll miss out on this.
Bummer. Other school committee updates? Hearing none, public comment?
Hi, I'm Dean from Lee. Good to see everybody. I'll make my annual point about Lisa's wonderful work, which is, those percentages you see at the end are one standard deviation. Typically, when you see something, and we saw, all saw how well the election numbers worked out, they'll give a plus or minus. That will be two standard deviations. And the theory is, that will cover 95%. A one standard deviation number will cover 68%. So, that basically means, a third of the time, you'll be out of the, out of those ranges.
Can you say the two standard deviations again? How much is that?
Yes. So, Lisa says, say the number said plus or minus 3%. That means, when that number, whatever year that was, rolls around, that will be in that range two out of three times, because that's a one standard deviation number. If it was a two standard deviation number, it'd be twice as wide, and we'd be in that range 95% of the time. If, you know, under the normal statistical assumptions. On a more serious topic, in addition to all the other stuff that happened in the last few weeks, there was another death in the district. And I hope we're not sweeping it under the rug and that we continue to make sure we address these issues of, I mean, I don't even want to say the word, but we know, we know what happened, and it's terrible. My condolences go out to the family, and I hope we, as a district, work on this. Thanks.
Okay, we have the list of future meetings down here. I won't go over all those. So, what we need to do now is to have a motion to go into non-public session for the purpose of the superintendent evaluation. So, could somebody please make that motion?
You're good at that, Kenny. That's yours.
I move that we go into non-public session, RSA 91-82-1, and it would be under a dismissal of promotion compensation of a public employee.
Heather, can we use your conference? Your conference room, I'm sorry.
Okay. Second. Moved by Kenny, seconded by Dan. Roll call vote?
Dan Klein, yes.
Sarah Farwell, yes.
Kenny Rupner, yes.
Denise Day, yes.
Tom Newkirk, yes.
Oh, Al Holland, yes.
Maria Barth, yes.
Okay.
That was one time.